Okay, folks, this is a little prelog to the up and coming video on the Roland Unified School District School Board Study Session of 1/17/2019. And why we're having this because prior to the actually initiating of the session that I was setting up the camera in a peripheral aspect of the room, you'll be able to see the orientation and along that back wall. And when Superintendent Julie Mitchell came up and said, Roy, we have this over space over in the corner for you, and we'd like you to move your camera. I said, well, do you know what the laws are? And she said, yes. I said, well, the law states, and as you know, anyone can photograph from any place in the meeting as long as it doesn't obstruct or interfere with the meeting. And I was about as rude as you can. And they had 12 chairs along, as you go to look at this video, just think of to the left is a wall, 12 chairs, nobody there, okay? And by law, every person sitting in those chairs could have been in video recording, okay? All 12 people, including me. What else do we have? We have this willful obstruction of the people's rights. It's your right for people under the law. And if you stand up, and you've seen the character of these people, you know, the untruth that they spin upon you and other things. If you've watched these videos over time, if you trust these people, you are what you are, okay? And then to add to the mix, we have the chairman or president of the board, Donna Friedman, come up and say, are you ready for this? You're not going to believe this. Well, some of the board members feel uncomfortable with you that your video recording would see some of their notes. And I'm saying, this is a public meeting on the topic. Why, what, should there be anybody be writing anything if it was visible? And then again, those 12 people could, you could have cameras like everywhere according to the law. What would they possibly write, be writing in this study session if anybody did see it? And I didn't really care about that. But this is, and they wouldn't feel comfortable. Oh, gosh, it almost brought me to tears. But these are, this is the caliber of people that you're dealing with. These are the same people that William Harrison had just thrown in the towel on these people and wants to get his neighborhood out of the district, okay? Go back the last couple of months in 2018 and see his three minutes of fame. And geez, I don't want to belabor this thing. These people, it's called, I saw a term in the Tribune today, it's called moral turpitude. You know what I mean? To willfully obstruct and it's an act of violence also. You want to read something interesting, there's some publications about violence. Violence isn't just somebody coming up smacking their face. It's a, it's a big topic and we'll touch on it another time. But these people are unworthy and you have allowed this to happen. And so, and it's probably going to go on because of the mental attitudes. And I tell you, it was really heartwarming when those two students from Nogales came up and took this board to task. And I'll tell you something, people, no matter what anybody wants to say about me, okay? If those two kids didn't tell you what this district is all about, what can we say? And then you had William Harrison come up. And then if you knew the situation, if you took the time to find out about the Oswald segment with the Oswald clan and that business up there, it just, it's nauseating. And do I, is a part of my life that I desire to, I have nothing better to do with my life? No. And that's all the board has to do is adopt video recording of the, not the bond oversight committee, I throw that in there, you don't see that corruption, okay? Moral, moral turpitude, you know? That recording and posting the recordings of the board meetings, it costs them, as a matter of fact, it's a YouTube function, they can do it, so forth, the cost is zero, okay? But they don't want to do that because they don't want you to know, they don't want you to be able to hold them accountable, okay? And like where Alex Flores said in the budget item of the last year, I believe it was in December, and oh, and this thing that I kept saying about with Oswald, that they had this $50 million windfall. Well, you, they don't want to come out and open the books, okay? And they don't want anybody looking at the books. But Harry Peterson, I always had his bond oversight committee, we were over at Oswald when Alex Flores, Assistant Superintendent, comes and says, well, you know something? Oswald clan, who has threatened us with lawsuits and yada yada, exposing us for our dirty underwear and so forth, you had $20 million to come over here and rebuild Oswald. Well, guess what? We're going to throw in another 30 million. And that's where I came, hey, $50 million just falling out of the sky all of a sudden? And these are the same people that they were promised a two-story building with no toilets, and they got a one-story building with no toilets. I mean, and all of a sudden, we've got $50 million? Then in the December, I believe it was December, budget situation with the board out there, Alex Flores asked, no, it was 30 million dollars, and because we were so thrifty with our bond money, that we come with 20 million dollars, and so that made the total of 50 million. Oh, and we can't, there's not enough time to go into all the details. If you know, it just makes you sick. You shouldn't trust these people, anything that they say, okay? They are not trustworthy. So, you got what you got. I want to get the hell out of this quagmire. You know, it's undeserved that they take time out of my life with this garbage, you know? And a few people don't want to step up as those two kids from Nogales did, okay? And finally, after so, I haven't known William Harrison in this Roland Unified School District montage, or whatever you want to call it, for years, and finally, he saw the light. Ooh, okay? So, somebody want to take over this thing and do it? I've had my fill of it. It's disgusting, okay? So, $50 million fell out of the sky. And if you saw the video where the three minutes of fame collection on the people from Oswald and the pregnant teacher that had walked across campus when she was pregnant with her two kids to go to the bathroom, I mean, it's really, really heartwarming. What are we, eight minutes and 12 seconds? Okay, now we're going to come up with the rest of the story.
But this is hard for me because I usually talk to David, he's across from me. I usually like whispering or like, can't whisper now. I wonder if this is a Super Bowl because she's like...
Oh, yeah, just in time.
Does it work better for you, David?
Yeah, a little bit better. Because I can see it really.
Okay, great.
Yeah, well, I think you can see her because she's going to turn and be watching this.
Okay. All right. Go ahead and turn it on. Okay, tell me, Brandy. Okay? Jeff. Okay, okay. Okay. It's January 18th, 2019, and I call the board study session of the Roland Unified School District Board of Education to order. It is now 8:46 a.m. Well, Dr. Mitchell, will you please do the roll call?
Yeah. Excuse me, Angelina Frye, present.
All right, I should have started to my left.
Carrie Chan.
Here.
Angelina Frye, present.
Lynn Evanhapp, here.
David Malkin.
Present.
And Donna Friedman.
Here.
All board members are present.
Are there any changes or items to be pulled from the agenda?
There are none.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda of the board study session of Friday, January 18th, 2019?
I make the motion. A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, you will be led in the pledge of allegiance to the flag by board member Carrie Chan.
Please rise. Clank your hearts, ready to give.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carrie. Dr. Mitchell, are there any public comments this morning?
Yes, there's one.
All right. Thank you. Remarks are limited to three minutes unless extended further or limited by both of the board. A maximum of 20 minutes unless extended by the board is allocated for each subject discussed. Ordinarily, board members will not respond to presentations and no action can be taken. However, the board may give direction to staff following a presentation. Roy Humphries?
Okay, folks, we have a new here, but we have a new governor wants to take parent out of parenting and have a liberal social agenda for the parents, which no one can pay for and should do, and is designed for the early education situation. My letter, the sun notes that inherently liberal agendas which defy the character and composition of the human animal fail. The attempt to mask expulsions by changing the rules of the game at the expense of the greater good is one example. As with the sacrifice of the many for the few, as noted in previous meetings, and Mr. William Harrison notes that you have failed miserably. Yes, they can. Schools can combine together with the community and form their own districts, which should happen with the southern half of this district forming its own school district on the north side to do whatever it's going to do. You have failed this community, the students and the parents. The deceit and contempt for transparency leaves you simply unworthy. As has been repeatedly demonstrated, you do not need a PhD to figure out how to run a school district. And to, I want to thank David Malkin and Donna Friedman for running because if I had been elected, I would have to resign so that not to soil my reputation with some considered to be a criminal aspects. And until, as Harry Peterson of Bond Oversight Committee said, until we have a grand jury come in and perhaps the appropriate persons go to jail, nothing is going to change in this district. And we're looking at Montebello to see what happens over there, if you've kept up on that. And your disdain for transparency is an assault on all members of this community. An attack on one is an attack on all as the superintendent sent the board chairman here to obstruct the right of the people to video recording. And as has been stated repeatedly, it's all you have to do is take this over, it's a no-cost situation. Do like the little district our Azus has done, they video record and they have live streaming. Thank you.
The board? The board will participate in governance workshop, including discussions involving board governance structures, board self-evaluation, and an RUSD governance handbook. I would like to turn it over to Dr. Mitchell.
Great, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for everybody coming together. I'm welcome back, Luann. It's our pleasure to have you back with us and help us with our work and help facilitate our learning today. So I am going to turn it over to you.
Well, great, thank you. And well, Happy New Year's, everyone. It's wonderful to start out the new year and get a chance to work with all of you. I really appreciate the invitation to come back. It's always a delight and a pleasure to work with all of you. It's such a strong team and I'm thrilled to be here. So, I brought with me these pictures again, so we all remember why we do what we do every day. And again, I really appreciate the work. So, if you would like to, let's jump in and get started. Please open up the blue folders that I've given you, and you will notice the first thing in there is our discussion guide for today. So if you want to take a look at that, and I have summarized it over here, just to simplify it and know that we all have a working copy of what we're going to do. Obviously, we're in the welcome and overview stage. We're going to just review our meeting guidelines very briefly. I know we'll spend more time on that later when we go through the governance handbook. But just as a reminder of, you know, what we've all agreed to as far as appropriate meeting behavior, we're going to then talk about your board self-evaluation. I think you are going to be excited and thrilled to see the results. I know I was, and very, very proud, which you should be. We're going to point out some strengths and also we're going to pick out some areas to discuss. Then we're going to review the governance handbook. And I know that Lynn and Donna have worked really hard to take some of the material that we developed last year and really put it into a nice structure. And actually, I'm going to compliment Brandy on this as well. Beautiful, beautiful job in putting all this together. Yay, Brandy! Yeah, and a great job, let's compliment Lynn and Donna as well, because they did a great job of taking it and really compiling it and making it very personalized to Roland. So I think, I think that's wonderful. And so, these are just the topics in there that are covered. So we'll review those and see if anybody has any comments about them, wants to make any changes. I've noticed a few, I've noted a few protocols that I think we should discuss. So anyway, unity of purpose, roles and responsibilities, norms and protocols, and as you might recall, we call those the four pillars of an effective governance team. So, so we'll talk about those, we'll check them, and again, within there, we'll go back to the meeting guidelines if there are any changes in there. Yes?
I'd just like to say that thanks to you, you put it in a format that Donna and I could go through, we might have rearranged a few things. We didn't add much, but we made it, I think, a little more user-friendly for our board. So thank you for the work you did.
Oh, you're so welcome. And yeah, I noted, it was, it was similar, but kind of restructured, and I think you did it. You guys did a terrific job. So additional meeting procedures, I don't know if anyone, any of these will rise to the level of protocol, but things that were requested for discussion is board comments and public comment, school, how do we handle ourselves during school reports at board meetings, and then communication, getting questions and answers and responses from Julie. So, those are the topics that we've got. And then, of course, I always write myself a reminder that I need you to do a board, an evaluation on the workshop and then, and then I always, and I actually, this almost happened again, two weeks ago, where we were, everybody was chatting and getting up and leaving, and I had to remind the board president, adjourn the meeting! So there's a note there to help us remember because, you know, at the end of the day, we need to remember to adjourn. So, anyway, that's, that's the plan for today. How does that sound to all of you? Is that kind of what you're expecting? Okay, great. Well, let's get started, and I want us to start with, I think, an important question. So if you go right behind the discussion guide for today, there is, there is a icebreaker kind of question for you to think about. I think this is an important question, especially in light of the fact that you, we've just completed a board self-evaluation. So, the first question is easy, my name is, and I think everybody can handle that one. And then I believe a strong governance team is one that. So I'm going to ask you to write your responses to that question, okay? From my grandkids, whatever this is that goes around. And it's like I got better from once and then I went back there and got it again. The cock just lingers and lingers.
That's the part, yeah. Yeah. And just moves on. Right, fine, thank you.
Okay, let's go around the room and share our answers and thoughts. So let's start with you now, President. What did you write?
You're all of them.
You can show them all.
Don't tell me we got taller.
Yeah, that would be great. Sorry, never. There we go.
Is respectful to one another?
Be respectful.
Whoops, advocate for the district.
What do you mean messing up here? Advocate for the district. Just start this again. And advocate for the district, is what you said? Okay?
Supports all personnel.
You've got a lot list there, huh? That's great.
Looks like Jeffrey New York. Disagree, no bridges.
Okay, and what's...
Disagree, no bridges, continue on.
You got more? Okay.
Honest and openly honest.
Don't apologize, this is a great list.
Honest and open with one another.
Okay.
Ask clarified question.
Yes, yes, this is a great list. I think I'm just going to keep this with me.
You can learn a lot with this.
Yeah. And you know, it's, it really is, it's a very thorough list, and all very important points, really to the point. So if anybody has exactly what's on, you know, one of Donna's points, we can just put a check mark there. So just, just let me know and mark the, there's a lot of agreement within this group, which is a great thing. So, Julie?
I have one on communication as well, so it communicates openly, honestly, and often.
Okay. Communicates, could you repeat it? I'm sorry.
Communicates openly, honestly, and often.
Okay, that's great. It's really an important piece, isn't it? Open, honest communication is what builds any team, isn't it?
And to check up on us if we're open or not.
Okay, sure. Yeah, slightly, put it slightly differently, so we'll...
Always maintain and focus on students.
Oh, that's a great one. Of course, that's why we're all here, right? So that, that is a really important one.
And then my last one is a combination of the first one, so it respects one another even in times of disagreement. So I gave the check mark on number one and a check mark on number one, two, three, four, five, six. No, four.
Four, one, two, three, four, yeah. I think that's great, and that's, those are really important pieces, being respectful to each other and to everyone else, and agreeing to disagree. And sometimes this happens. We've taught before how there are six of you on this governance team, so that all, there's a variety of perspectives coming forward, and it's important to listen to each other, but it's important to disagree too. So, let's put this one up and we'll start.
I did have to, you'll get space there, but then I have this back wall to wherever you work best.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hang in the charts, you may welcome to hang in there, but then also along the back wall.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Is this okay, because everybody can see it here?
That's fine.
Okay. I could put some on that and two.
Yeah.
That might be good. Okay. Okay, so what did you have, Carrie?
The goal is to also have a understandable common goal, and help go within the reach.
That's great. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And go reach, go, and everyone is honest. Everyone is very honest, and we have that. Everyone.
Okay, and honesty?
Yeah.
Honesty is on here, right? Yeah, is it okay to just put a check mark on that? Okay.
Yeah, people all, six of us, come from, and be the breadwinner, so we have to listen to everyone. So, and also we need to contribute our knowledge or our experience as much as we can, and listen to others.
Right. Okay, so share knowledge and listen to each other.
This way they will get the best out of the team.
Okay, that's really important, and that is, as we said a minute ago, why there are six of you, because you do have different perspectives, and sharing those perspectives helps you to come to the best conclusion for students, right? It's great, okay? Is that, is that it, Carrie? All right, great, thanks. Good, good suggestions here. Angelina, what did you have?
Uh-oh. That are motives for being here for the students.
Okay.
That we trust one another, and we respect differing thoughts, differing thoughts and opinions.
Okay, so, trust, I don't think trust was mentioned yet. And what was the last one?
Students, I think that one was mentioned, that we're, I think Julie mentioned that one someplace.
Always maintain, focus on students. So you don't think we need to repeat this one, or do you mind?
Oh, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, okay.
There was one other you had...
You had one other one there.
Trust each other.
Oh, the respect.
Respect.
Maybe that would go with the first one as well. Okay, so put that one here.
Respect one another's opinions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I checked Julie's common instincts too. I think that's great. And, and again, while just thinking about why we're here, and you all have very, very similar thoughts, so that's great. And what did you have, Lynn?
The mind overlap too.
Oh, okay, good.
Tell them what they are and then we can just keep on...
Okay.
Listens, keep student first as our focus. That's on the...
Yeah.
Delve deep into, delve, delve deep to get answers regarding concerns.
Oh, that's a good one, we don't have that one. This one is focus on students, okay. And, okay, let's record that one, delve deep to, say it again, please, Lynn.
Delve deep to get answers regarding concerns.
Okay.
Working together is been mentioned several times.
Yeah.
Honesty, honestly states disagreements.
Okay. So is this coming under open, honest with one another? Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Gets clarification.
Get clarification. I think that was up here too.
After their questions.
Yeah.
That's it?
Okay.
One from the bottom.
Got it. Okay. Great, great list again. Very important things. David, what did you have?
I have one sentence.
Ah, okay, that's, that's perfectly fine when you have, it's really long, isn't it? It goes on about three pages, but it's one sentence.
I believe that a strong governance team is one that has open and candid communication.
Okay.
Focus on opportunities to improve and achieve common goals.
Okay, let's take a moment, open and honest with each other.
So it was the...
This one?
Yeah.
And then what was the, what was the second point?
Focus on opportunities to improve.
Okay, I don't think, no, we don't have that one. Okay. Okay.
And achieve common goals.
There we go. Yeah. Great, lots of like-thinking and some really important points. And I think this taken all together is a great description of what an effective team is. And I, I just wanna say that, that, that I, you know, I commend all of you because you do take the time to do this work. To stop, meet last year and talk about the development of a governance handbook, then meet again this year to review that handbook and also do a self-evaluation, to really take the time to reflect on your work and how you're working together as a team. And think about, we're a great team, but how can we work together to make our team even stronger? And of course, it's always, we can all always improve and that's an important piece. You know, I find that boards who do what you do and me to discuss these, these items really are, are more effective boards because they're really thinking about their work. And I really, really commend you for doing that. You're gonna see in the board's self-evaluation, some very, very positive results. So before we go to that, I just wanna mention that I put up a parking lot on the back wall in case something pops up for somebody that would take us off track if we discussed it at that moment. So without further ado, let's go to the self-evaluation. If you pull out the very back pages here, you will see there's two documents that are colorful. One is, one says board self-evaluation result, unified school district. And the other one is how to, how to interpret and deal with the results. So this one is for you to keep and you can go home and read it if you wanna review about the process that we're going to go through. But you don't need to worry about reading it right now because I'm gonna tell you what it says. So the first thing I want you to do is, like the state dashboard, this is color-coded. And our colors are a little bit different, I, I have a funny story about that. But if you look at this, green is the strongest color. And then blue is also very strong. Yellow is a warning and red is an, an area that you really need to focus on. So my funny story about this is, we developed this way before the dashboard came into being. And when we did it, our communications department made blue the best color. And all of, all of us consultants said, no, 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 green means go, you have to switch it. So Lynn, I saw the way the dashboard turned out and they have blue is the best color, it just kinda made me chuckle. So anyway, so we're a little bit different. What I want you to do is just quickly flip through and you will notice, this is a fabulous result. It is almost completely blue and green. I don't see a lot of results like this, this is terrific. And there's a couple of yellows, but absolutely no reds. I think there's only two yellows. So this is just terrific. I'm gonna give you a chance to study it and, and as I, what I'm, I'm gonna give you some instructions on what to do right now. The first thing we're gonna look at is the areas of strength. And in your packets, Brandy always gives you these packets, in there each of you has a highlighter. I gave you a second highlighter in a different color and I'll tell you why in a minute. So you now, you have two highlights, everyone has, everyone has two. And the first one, use one of them to go through and highlight what you think the greatest strengths of the team are. And we're gonna use the second one to highlight areas that you really think we need to talk about, okay? So that's why there's two colors. So the first thing you're gonna do is go through and I want you to pick what you, out of the, out of these many, many strengths, I want you to pick the one thing that you're most proud of. And be prepared to tell us why you're so proud of that. Now, I'm gonna tell you, you do not have to pick an individual item. You can pick a whole category. For example, board unity, because if I make you pick one item, you're all gonna have a really hard time, there's way too many items. So you could pick a whole category, like, wow, we're really strong in board unity, I'm really proud of that, and share why. So everybody take a minute, read the results and pick out the one thing that you're most proud of. Yeah. I know it's really hard. So let's, let's go around the table and start with Julie this time. And what, what is the area of strength that you're most proud of about this team?
So it was very difficult. I think in looking at it and being able to select a category, I selected the board unity.
That is really...
Because I could only choose one. Because I could only choose one.
There were too many to choose from, but that is a really important topic, isn't it? I mean, in order to work effectively, there has to be unity on the team. That doesn't mean that you're always unified in the way you approach an issue, does it? As we talked earlier, sometimes you have very different perspectives, but when you come to a decision, you support that decision and work together toward common goals.
Just as a, as a side, that was looking at from the role of the governance team as a whole. My role as superintendent, I would support, but I might only say one.
Okay, sorry, Julie.
So I wanted to clarify my, my thinking, but this is the support one. But there were like three bullets in that one, but that one was also quite nice, huh?
Yeah, that's great. Absolutely. Carrie, what did you pick?
I wish you, I wish you'd picked me first because I was saying exactly what...
Ah, exactly what, what Julie said.
It's hard for us to pick one.
Yeah.
And I think unity is the one. But all of others, it's really, really, really difficult to, to, to pick what is, I think, one, so it's really difficult.
Well, they're all important, aren't they?
Yeah.
But you have to start from a place of unity, which is why it's the first category to be effective.
It would be well.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Light-mindedness again. Here we go, Angelina, what did you pick?
So I'm, oh, I think I always say that. But I did pick a category, board culture.
Oh, that's a good one too. And that's really important too, they, they tie together so nicely, don't they?
They are very similar.
Yeah. Having a good positive culture is what helps you build the unity, it's really, really a crucial piece, isn't it? Lynn, what did you have?
Mine was different too. I picked the board meeting section.
Okay.
Because I think we're doing a much better job of everybody comes prepared, that we have data to judge that on. And we're...
That is crucially important and a really big deal. And also, everybody coming prepared, doing the work behind, you know, in, in, before the board meeting so that you're coming to the meetings ready to deliver and vote so you can make good decisions on the advocate. It's crucially important.
When we came, when some of us came on the board originally, we started late and we finished late. It was a big problem.
Well, and your public expects you to start on time, don't they? So that's really an important piece. Good, thank you. And David, what did you have?
I just want to preface with Linda's, I would say, I was an audience participant at the panel on the board.
Uh-huh.
And when I used to do my public speaking, I would ask, we start on time. Because it was supposed to start at like a six o'clock or seven o'clock and they'd be over two hours late coming out post session.
Two hours?
Yeah. And we would have kids here that had a little school the next day that were being honored. And they would be honored till nine, ten o'clock, two meters.
And it wasn't unusual for board meetings to end at eleven o'clock, ten o'clock.
I've said at many board meetings, the audience till eleven, twelve o'clock. It was horrible and there were disagreements among the board members. I think this agreement is good, but when it turns to retaliation, it's not, it's not any good anymore. I just have to say as a preface, I think it's such a tremendous difference. Like Lynn was saying, it's a big, big change, yes.
Well, I'm, I'm, you know, it's great, it's obvious that you've, you've all worked really hard to form a strong team here.
The one I picked was structured.
Structured, okay. Did you want to say what I did, what was in the...
Going back to what I said earlier, I think having support and feedback is a tremendous improvement. Have somebody that has an education background, a educator as well as a administrator or a fiscal person basically we have said. Before he came aboard, we had no idea what was in place, what was happening. And I, I just think that that's been a big difference as far as being physically responsive as well. I have to say that, and not, I hear it's not scored real high, or is it a process to review and revise about policies? But around the, which I'll, I'm not even aware of some of the policies that come forth in the board and these were revised because of a change in the law. And I think we're doing a really good job of changing policies that we know. The one that's, I would say structured.
That's great. Well, obviously, a very important thing in your comments about being able to monitor the fiscal health of the district is huge because you can't do any of the things you wanna do for students if you're not physically sound. So that's really a huge piece. And keeping your policies up to date is really, that, that's hugely important. You know, it's, it's a lot of work and sometimes people don't realize how important it is, but you know that you get updates almost five times a year about the laws are changing all the time. And that your policies, we change the sample policies to be aligned with the laws and making sure that you stay up to date on that is really, really important. So, good, it's an important piece as well. Donna, what did you have?
Oh, I went back and forth with board unity and support. So I'm gonna pick support only because now when you ask staff, they know about the goals. Like the first one says, the board demonstrates commitment to district priorities and goals. And before we didn't have really goals and now if you're asking the staff, they know that these are the goals and it's very laid out thanks to Dr. Mitchell. So it was very hard to pick those two.
Well, because I'm sure it was very hard for all of you to pick.
All of them.
All of you, right? You guys did a great job. Yeah, and I think that that's really, what you mentioned about the goals is crucially important. Having clear goals that the board adopts and stands by, because sometimes what you see in districts is the board will say, yeah, these are our goals, but then they get off on different directions and, and that's really hard for staff because staff really needs to know where it is you wanna go and so that everybody is following the same path and is really focused on it.
And they have focus areas now, so when you go visit, you can take your focus area and Dr. Mitchell started that and it's sort of excellent that you see it all in the flashlights.
That's great, that's really wonderful. Well, these are all important and you guys have great reasons for picking them. And again, I wanna commend you on, on an excellent job here. So now we're gonna go through this again with your other colored highlighter. And, but before you do, I wanna mention, we talked about reds and yellows, which red is irrelevant. And there's only two yellows. I want you not, there's another way that you, that I think is an important aspect of picking out a topic for conversation. And the other one is, even if it's gotten a blue, it could, there could be a discrepancy in scoring. So I'm gonna give you some examples here. If you look at number one, the board is focused on achievement for all students. Four people said almost always, one person said less often. And so it might be, it might be more important to talk about that than even your yellows or to find out, why does somebody think that? Why is there a discrepancy in the way it's perceived by a different board member? The same is true on number seven. Board members agree on the role and responsibilities of the board and superintendent. So notice that two people said almost always, two said often and one said less often. So I want you to go through now and pick the one item or one, let's make it two. Pick two items that you think are most important for us to talk about. And, and you can't just narrow it to one, if you have one you really, really wanna talk about, that's okay. But... But think about the discrepancies as well. Don't just, don't just automatically go to the yellows. What are some of these discrepancies that we really need to clarify within the team? Okay, so do that now.